Good evening. If we can settle down, anybody who's coming in, if you could come on in so we can get started. We have, I think it's a motion to convene the public hearing on the 2014-2015 budget. All right. This meeting is convened. It is a public hearing, which means that folks who called before, I think, 12 or something like that, are allowed to speak. We have 13 people who registered to speak, and we're going to begin with, and I gotta apologize if I mess up names, that's not my intention. Ms. Olivia Santiago, I'm sorry. Please do me the favor, in this community, the favor of saying your name at the mic. Each person, when you step up, please say your name. Our clerk reminds us that our bylaws just allow three minutes to speak. That's three minutes to speak. So when you hear that bell ring, in courtesy and respect for the people that are going to come after you, please sum up your remarks. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Enya Olivia. Yo soy una estudiante bilingüe. Yo pienso que sería injusto que la señora Turner que le corten su posición. Y solo quería decir que no me refiero solamente a la señora Turner, me refiero a otra secretaria. Que han pasado por esto, y que tal vez pasarán por esto. Me gustaría...
Thank you, Karen.
Conservar, me gustaría conservar a la señora Turner y a otra secretaria. En mi pensar, pienso que esto sería injusto, que otras personas, y a la señora Turner, que es una de las señoras only en la escuela de East High School. Only hay dos personas bilingües, sería el señor Hester LeTrey y la señora Edith Turner, ¿verdad? Y sería injusto que yo, como una estudiante de la East High School, que llevo dos años, sería para mí que la dejaran porque me siento cómoda con ella, y yo la siento a ella como si fuera mi mamá. Ustedes entienden? Y, ma, que estoy un poco nerviosa porque, de verdad, se me sentiría triste si le quitaran su puesto. Y cuando nosotros la necesitamos a ella, ya está ahí al 100% con nosotros, y me gustaría que la dejaran, y que, de verdad, hicieran lo que ustedes mejores pudieran, cosas así.
Hi, my name is Dejery Michelle. I mean, my name is Dejery McFadden, I'm just gonna translate what she said. She said, "Good evening, my name is Enya Olivia Santiago. I'm a student from East High School Foundation Academy. I'm an eighth grader. I don't like that the staff is being cut off. This will affect many students around us, our district, as well as me and my family and my friends at school and administrators. I feel like I don't want to lose Ms. Turner because she does a lot for us. She takes care of the, when she needs to take care of, and especially more. She goes out, she goes over the brim for us. And we got students and teachers to sign our paper."
Thank you. Megan Reddington, Megan Reddington, Megan Reddington. And then after Ms. Reddington, Bridgette Monroe.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I went to prepare remarks for tonight, and I went onto my computer to get started, and I found what I had prepared last year. And I was here last year, and I looked through my remarks, and they were so similar to why I am here this year. And I really need to express to you that I, as a parent, am doing my job in this district. I am doing my job promoting and celebrating the students and the teachers and the programs in this district. That is my job as a parent. And I am here to ask you, the board members, to please be leaders of this community, and to look at schools and programs that are succeeding in this community, and to give them the funding that they need. School 58 is an expeditionary learning school. It's one of four expeditionary learning schools in the district. It is a school that has hosted a national site seminar, bringing in teachers and principals from all over the country to come and see best practices at School 58, to study students and teachers and school culture and inquiry-based learning. And this school needs to get the funding to do what you are asking our schools to do, and that is to succeed, to graduate students. We are currently a K-11 building. We have one more year for a grow-out. We need a commitment in this budget for funding to maintain our expeditionary learning contract. I am asking you, the leaders of this school board, of this community, to please duplicate... Commissioner White, you talk about duplicating programs that work. This is a program we haven't even been able to finish yet. Please do not cut the funding in this program until we've had an opportunity to see if it works. We are doing our job. Please maintain the fidelity of these programs in this district that are working, and do not pass this budget until we have contracts with expeditionary learning that will keep families in this district. We have charter schools in this community that use this model, expeditionary learning. Charter schools were supposed to be models for public schools. Please let us maintain this expeditionary learning school and these four expeditionary learning schools in our district so that we can give kids the best education and the one that they deserve in this community. Thank you.
Bridgette Monroe, and she will be filed by Jacqueline Katie.
Good evening, commissioners. I'm here today, you know, we're hearing the word fidelity a lot, and I know I've certainly heard it from the superintendent in regards to Montessori Academy, 53 School. As you know, I'm the co-president, the PTA at 53. We have a very active PTA, and we have a really tight connection with our school-based planning team. So we always have the report-outs, and we have an excellent team going there. What we're seeing in this budget is that you're cutting some of our Montessori coaches. And these are two teachers who are, I guess, teachers on assignment, who are pushing into our classes to try and help our teachers learn the Montessori method. And the big problem here is, you know, when I started advocating for Montessori eight years ago, I was pushing for the gold standard, which is AMI certification. They have it for public schools, and it has just been winnowed down and winnowed down to the point that we had teachers, many teachers who came in this year who are just doing this online program, which, I mean, it's something, but it certainly isn't what you really need to understand and fully develop the Montessori teaching experience. And then what we've also found is that we don't have all the materials that we need for our classrooms. So we have teachers who are learning this online as they come into the school, they don't have all the materials. We obviously need the coaches to be able to push in to help support those teachers. And then when you put on top of that the district's decision to go with the state's Common Core curriculum, now on top of that, we have to try and figure out how to push that curriculum, which does not fit Montessori. Montessori can address the standards, but the curriculum being forced on something that's supposed to be a specialized program is very, very difficult to do. And I know my kids aren't happy with it. You know, we're seeing it with expeditionary learning, the IB, Montessori, the fact that there isn't that commitment and the follow-through, because these are great programs, and if the district sticks with it and sees it all the way through and doesn't make these kinds of cuts, we can really continue to see success. Montessori has more than just the grades, the testing that's above what the district average is, but it's an entire community and culture where kids are really learning how to deal with kids within multi-age groupings, conflict resolution, I mean, I know a lot of you have visited the school, and I would certainly encourage any of you to contact our principal, Shirley Green, to come and visit. So I would really hope that you can find the funding so we can continue with our Montessori coaches, because the Montessori is just getting stripped away. Thank you.
Jacqueline Katie filed by Judy Brown.
Hi, good evening. I'm here to protest two items in the budget, but I want to put my remarks in context. I read several weeks ago in the Democrat Chronicle that one of the board members thought this was the best budget that the board had seen, and I thought, "Oh, what is he thinking?" Then somebody sent me a copy of the superintendent's strategic plan, and you know what? In many ways, this is a good budget. It supports the superintendent's vision of summer learning, extended day, social workers, extracurricular activities, arts and music. Those are critically important services to return to our district, and I thank the school district for that. But for me, there is one big disconnect. The vision and the strategy indicate the critical importance of quality early education, but the budget removes critical pillars of that quality. The director of early education position is one. That position leads a complex program offered in many of the schools and through almost 20 contracted agencies. The position is charged with knowing a vast body of knowledge of early education, special education, budget management, contract management. We need to keep that position. A second important position also has to do with early education, a position that has historically analyzed pre-K data. That's been eliminated also. The job is now called the project administrator in accountability and school operations. The incumbent is a co-author of the UPK plan and is the district's principal architect of the evaluation system in pre-K, which assesses both teacher and student success. There's not another grade in the district that has a 15-year analysis of teacher quality and student growth. We should not get rid of this position. Early education advocates completely agree that pre-K needs to be integrated with K-1, 2, 3, in support of grade 3 reading. Early education needs to be integrated into the district thinking with a cabinet-level position knowledgeable in the elements of early education. But that integration also needs the focused leadership in early education, knowledgeable early educators, ongoing screening and evaluation, and a feedback loop that results in continuous improvement for teachers and children. I hope these two positions will be restored in the budget. Thank you.
Judy Brown and Nella Corin.
Good evening, board members. My name is Judy Brown. I am a school secretary at Early Childhood School Number 57. I come on behalf of our school because they're going to be cutting our clerical staff in the building. The proposed budget will have a negative impact mainly because we're a pre-K to second grade school, and our children really deserve the best, and our families deserve the best. First and foremost, having one clerical staff in the office would have a terrible impact, considering all the things that have happened in schools lately, over the past couple of years. Secondly, there are many responsibilities that are held by both clerical staff. Myself, I answer phones, I maintain the school's budget, obtain substitutes for all staff absences, do payroll, enter students in classrooms. I maintain much of the data in the office, as well as ordering supplies for school. The other staff person, the office clerk for in our office, she does many, she has many responsibilities as well. Answering phones, transportation, attendance, she takes care of the cumes, updates information for students. There are so many things that a two-person office needs to be in our school. I just want to say that it would be a detriment to our students, and it wouldn't help our families. They say that they want us to be the kind of school that helps parents feel comfortable and that they can, you know, get customer service, but customer service with one person in the office is almost impossible. So... Excuse me for being nervous. The parents deserve better, the students deserve better. I'm sure many of you, I don't know if any of you have ever been in our building, but we're a wonderful school, and that the importance of the education at that level, it just would greatly impact our school. And I just ask that you reconsider taking out the other clerical staff in our building and restoring it. Thank you.
Ms. Corin, is that right?
Yes, that's fine.
Filed by Laura Coon.
My name is Nella Corin, and I'm really here on my behalf. Since coming to the district, I have not only done what was asked of me, but taken on the responsibility of creating new reports and improved ways of presenting the material. I've done research on my own personal time, paid out of my own pocket memberships in professional organizations, and many times used my own money to attend the conventions of AERA and AEA in order to learn and broaden my understanding of the programs and subject matter I've been asked to analyze. I have written reports informing the administration of my research and shared the information I gained from special opportunities I've had to meet with my colleagues, both in the United States and other countries. I've taken numerous classes and attended many workshops in order to ensure that my knowledge remained current. I believe that the principals, directors, and those that are in the community who have come to me for information have always found me available, and I've done my best to help create a pleasant atmosphere in any office in which I work. The workplace of today depends upon collegial cooperation, not only in the specific department to which you are assigned, but between various departments in which there is a shared interdependency. In recent years, I was assigned more to analyze the results of state tests and report card results. My previous supervisor believed my ability to take numeric data and help to improve the manner and to present it in graphs and tables that are very easy to understand was beneficial to helping people, the staff, in doing a better job in helping our children. When I refocused on this priority, I was given clerical help, aid in doing some of the role work of filling in numbers and such that I generated. As the district lost more and more clerks, the number of schools and marking periods increased. Technology was some unfortunately major glitches, and my willingness to spend a great deal of my personal time on completing these files has allowed us to get the majority of these reports out in a timely manner. Ultimately, the reports we generate depend on how accurately the data we use is put into the system. Because we have fewer clerks in the schools, and many of the experienced school clerks have been replaced by less experienced people, they do not always have time or knowledge enough to question the data they're asked to input. Because I was the only person holding the title of research analyst for so long, my seniority has little meaning, and I'm more than disappointed that when the position of senior research analyst was created, I was not given the opportunity to apply. Actually, a number of years ago, I passed that civil service exam, but the position did not exist. I've always done my best to fulfill my assignments as an analyst, evaluator, and researcher in a professional manner, and I believe I have earned the respect of my peers by doing so. I take seriously my obligations to the citizens of this community who pay my salary, and I would like to continue to help teachers and administrators improve the education of their children. of their children.
Laura Coon and filed by Brian Erickson.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm Laura Coon. I've been employed with the city's school district as a clerk four for seven years. This is my second time speaking to the board about budget cuts. It is the third time in those seven years that I have been affected by either a layoff or a displacement. Needless to say, it's a little difficult for my family and I, this kind of uncertainty. But perhaps more important to you, this kind of ambiguity does a true disservice to the families, staff, and students that I and that all of us serve. It seems that every year when we're faced with a challenging budget, the most expedient solution is to cut clerical positions. This makes very little sense to me because cutting these positions does not provide the district with meaningful monetary savings. The negative impact of cutting my and other clerical positions will be felt very strongly by the students, families, and staff that I serve. I take care of things so that students and staff can focus on learning. And if I'm not at my desk next year, there is no doubt that that will have a direct impact on students and their families. Who will provide attendance verifications to families when they call and need them? Who will change addresses for families so that they can get their children's report cards another mail? Who is going to act as a liaison from the various public service agencies when they call and ask for records that will help provide services to our students? Who is going to maintain the records of students with disabilities so that we as a district can maintain compliance with the federal and state mandates? Who is going to collect homework and provide that to students who are absent? Who is going to provide early dismissals? Who is going to answer that phone when a parent calls and needs to talk to a child during the day? This is just a small sample of what I do on a daily basis, and it doesn't begin to touch the ways that I support the staff within my building and within the district as a whole. How often are teachers and administrators going to be pulled away from the students in the classrooms in order to take care of these important responsibilities when I and other clerks are not there? I really love my job, and I see myself as a problem solver. It's my job to take care of things so that other staff members can focus on the kids in the classrooms. So as you consider the budget, I ask that you please think about the role that non-teaching staff play. It really is important to maintain a functioning school. Thank you.
Brian Erickson to be filed by Susan DeVelder. Mr. Erickson? Is that you, Mr. Erickson? Okay. And he's to be filed by Susan DeVelder.
My name is Brian Erickson, and I work at the Franklin Campus at Integrated Arts and Technology High School. As a clerk for the district who subscribes to the concept of customer service as described in the superintendent's action plan, I personally have been trained to answer every call on or before the third ring. But with my position being eliminated next year, I can't help but wonder who's going to answer the calls at all, let alone by the third ring? And how does this fit into the district's plan to improve customer service? As a clerk, I provide customer service not only to my parents and students, but to my administrators and staff throughout my workday. On many occasions, I receive phone calls from angry parents concerning their child or about incidents for which I have no information or involvement, but I speak to them, I listen to them, I calm them down, and that reflects how they see the district going forward. And they thank me at the end of the call, which can last as long as they need it to. And I thank them for their patience until I can contact an administrator to call them back. I don't understand how the plan to get rid of people who actually provide the customer service to their school communities on a daily basis. Can someone explain to me how cunning people like me improves the customer service of the district? I signed an agreement to come and work for the city's school district and be employed in a clerk three position. When I did so, I was assured by each CI that the clerk three positions would be stable. If that assurance cannot be honored, then not only does it show a lack of professionalism on the part of the district, but also a true lack of customer service to its employees. In closing, our customers, our parents, students, and staff will not benefit from the cuts proposed, nor do the students, parents, or staff approve of them. Whatever happened to the concept that the customer is always right? Thank you.
Ms. DeVelder will be filed by Anne Marie Hetzer. Anne Marie Hetzer.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is Susan DeVelder, and I am a lifelong resident of the city of Rochester and a staff member of the Rochester City School District. I have a daughter who is a graduate of Rochester City Schools and a granddaughter who currently attends Rochester City Schools. Some years ago, when my daughter attended high school in the district, I became aware through my own set of circumstances that not all students were equally represented. There were students who did not have an easy time succeeding in school due to issues in their lives. At that time, I made it my goal, if the opportunity ever arose, that I would become a part of the district's staff, and I would do my best to assist the children of other city residents to obtain the best education possible. As a district employee, I not only perform the duties of a senior school secretary, but I also spend my personal time giving the students an ear to listen to their concerns. I utilize my experience to help them resolve issues that are preventing them from receiving a sound education. I help them with their schoolwork when there is no one else available. I provide them with my personal attention when they need it most. These are just a few of the extra services that the other clerical staff and I give freely to our students. It's the personal care that we give to these students that you will not see listed in some job description of our duties. The budget that is before you not only takes away the livelihood of those staff members whose positions have been cut, but it erases our ability to continue the work that I believe in so strongly. One of the goals of this year's budget is to give our students more options for a better education. By removing alternative programs, the budget fails to meet this goal. Not every student learns in the same manner. Alternative programs are important to those students who need extra services to be able to receive an equal quality education, not just those who fit into one model offered by the district. Please keep in mind that when you are making a decision to cut clerical staff, you are not simply losing a person who types up memos or answers phones. You are losing a person who cares deeply about what happens to these kids. And on many occasions, we're the only person that can establish a bond and make a difference. Thank you for your time and for listening to my concern.
Anne Marie Hetzer filed by Patricia Dangler.
Good evening. If this budget is approved, I will be the only office clerk four left at SODA. My coworkers Patty Pierce and Teresa Dupre. Patty has 18 years and Teresa has 19, will be cut from the school. The clerical staff has been cut so deep in the past three years that Patty is doing the work of three people. She is the guidance and records clerk in addition to supporting an assistant principal for grades 11 and 12. Teresa is a library and textbooks clerk, another two-person job. The question that we keep asking, that we have yet to get an answer on, is how the work will get done without them? No one at the school can answer that question because they were never asked for their opinion. People at central office developed a formula on their own that resulted in SODA losing two clerks. Had these people spent any time in a school library, a guidance office, a main office, or an academy office, they would know the importance of our jobs and the interaction that we have with the students all day, every day. We are the first point of contact for these students, the parents and the teachers, the staff, and we resolve most of the issues at our level. By cutting these positions, the superintendent's comparison to Wegmans and their commitment to customer service just doesn't hold water. Our customers, students, and parents deserve the very best, and there is simply no way that they are going to get that from us if we are down two more people. As a clerk who works directly with the students, I am urging the board to reconsider these cuts and keep our team intact in order to help us remain one of the most successful high schools in the district. Evelyn Costello, who is in charge of the clerical, has folders. I'll leave them with the clerk for you guys to look at, and you could see what these two girls do. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dangler. And Ms. Dangler will be filed by Amy Levine.
Thank you to the members of the school board for this opportunity to speak tonight. I stand before you asking you to reinstate the full-time position of the executive director of early childhood education. This position is vital to the success of our youngest students. The current director, Dr. Robin Hooper, is a seasoned, well-respected, early childhood expert, and she has made many positive contributions to the district program during the time she has held this position. Here are just three examples. One, receiving a large state grant to expand to full-day pre-kindergarten and coordinating the smooth implementation of this expansion in February of this year. Two, adding technology to pre-K classrooms by increasing the number of student computers, teacher laptops, smart boards, and iPads. Three, selecting and implementing the Highscope curriculum in a planned systematic manner. She has also strengthened community collaborations to support students and family learning. One of these collaborations is with WXXI. We have a partnership to offer yearly series of professional development workshops for pre-kindergarten, kindergarten, and special education teachers, as well as a yearly series of workshops for pre-K parents that WXXI allows us, that, I'm sorry, WXXI holds in their boardroom, inviting the parents to sit around the board table on a monthly basis. Two, public libraries, a yearly series of Saturday family science events, as well as a children's film festival for both children and their families. And three, transition to kindergarten. As we approach the end of the school year, the transition to kindergarten annual event is planned for May 3rd. This annual event supports both adults and children in getting ready for kindergarten. There are many active learning centers for the children and workshops for family members. Each pre-K child leaves with a bag filled with learning materials to help slow and prevent summer learning loss. Commissioner White, last Thursday I listened to as you were asking for data to support the success of district programs, other district programs. The early childhood department has a long history, over 10 years, of working with Children's Institute to collect data and publish an annual report, the recap or Rochester Early Childhood Assessment Report, that discusses the successes of our CSD pre-K program, as well as showing areas in need of growth. This information is used to strengthen and improve the program through planning professional development, showing what materials we need to purchase to support learning in classrooms, and to guide individual and program growth. I would like to close by reading a quote from Our Voice that was written and submitted by Commissioner Evans. "The first teacher to a child should be their parents. However, for many, the family structure is severely broken. Pre-K can be part of the overall solution to getting the young excited and interested in education." Frederick Douglass said, "It is easier to build strong children than to repair broken men." By investing in pre-K, we are making an investment that will hold and build strong men and women and save us millions of dollars in the long run. By investing in pre-K, we are investing in the future. In order to do this, we need a full-time executive director of early childhood education." And for all of you, I have an invitation to our transition to kindergarten event. I hope you will come and experience it with us, as well as a copy of our current recap report.
Thank you. Amy Levine, is it Levine? Filed by Dan DiClemente.
My name's Amy Levine, and I teach for the Rochester Preschool Parent Program based at the Dr. Walter Cooper Academy. I first want to say thank you to the wonderful and hard-working team of Principal Cameron Clyburn and Assistant Principal Deborah Solomon for fully, for fully accepting pre-K into the Cooper family. This is one collaborative team that has worked hard to benefit all children in the school, and it would be a tragedy to tear this team apart. I just returned from the New York State Association for the Education of the Young Child State Conference, the NACY Conference, and each keynote workshop that I attended had the same overwhelming theme, and that was how to keep pre-K developmentally appropriate and it still adhere to the Common Core standards. State education speakers, national educate, national early childhood policymakers, teachers and administrators, all shared similar thoughts, and that, and that was, I quote, "The New York State Pre-Kindergarten Foundation for the Common Core can be used to provide an essential beginning for the development, developing and implementing high-quality curriculum, creating meaningful and appropriate learning experiences, designing learning environments, planning standards-based instruction and assessment." Well, after hearing this several times from numerous speakers at the workshops, I said to myself, in our district, Robin Hooper has already led us to accomplish much of this task. Throughout this district, Robin has, early childhood director, has fully implemented a research-based, developmentally appropriate curriculum called Highscope. She has consistent, ongoing, high-quality professional development for all staff. She uses assessments that drive excellence in classroom environment, adult-child interaction, instruction, and concept development. With our transient population, staff has noticed that children have had a much easier time than ever before moving from class to class, childcare center to public school, public school to childcare center, and public schools to childcare centers. Highscope provides for similar routines and signage, as well as similar vocabulary and conflict resolution practices, all of which is comforting for children in transition. Upon my return from the state conference, it's very clear to me, after hearing and speaking to many in the field, that Rochester is on the right page, if not the leader in UPK. Please reconsider keeping Dr. Hooper in the position of early childhood director and Highscope as our curriculum to continue this momentum for the benefit of all children and families. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan DiClemente.
That's how many civil service positions have been cut over the past 15 years. That's 16%, while administration has grown 6% over the same time period. $20,000. That's the average salary of an office clerk, one of 21 in all, who will be laid off on July 1st thanks to a formula, the third one in the past three years that was developed without any input from the clientele out in schools. How much are we paying the think tank that targeted these workers? Which efficiency expert thought that lower-paid, highly efficient clerks that help more children and parents than anyone else in this district are what needs to be eradicated in order to improve customer service? One of the key priorities outlined in the district's action plan is customer service, and yet this budget proposes eliminating the very people who provide it. I don't care how nice the clerk is at the store, if she's the only one there and you're waiting an hour in line to get to her, then the customer service sucks. And if these cuts are approved, this district will be changing its slogan from Wegmans, "Every day you get our best." "Every day you get our best," to Tops Never Stop Saving You More. All of us in this community lobbied to get more money for education, and as a result, the district received eleven million dollars over and above the governor's original proposal. The legislators in Albany were smart enough to alter the state budget to better fund priorities. That's what we're asking the school board to do, to adequately fund the district's priorities and not simply rubber-stamp this budget. Meet Wes Reeves. He lives in the city, and he has a fourteen-year-old daughter that goes to STEM. Wes distributed seven-thousand-three-hundred packages last year for thirteen bucks an hour. He's been working for eight years as a messenger. Meet Annie Scott. She's been a telephone operator for the past twenty-seven years. She's three years short of retirement. Meet Laura Coon, Caroline Anthony, Effie Beard, Ayesha Grant, or any one of the thirty-two support staff members that will lose their jobs under this proposed budget. This isn't attrition. These aren't vacancies. These are people we're talking about, and they have children and families, and they serve our children and their families. And they don't talk about these kids like they're some statistic. Like the Center for Governmental Research, they talk to these kids every single day, and they pay attention to these kids. It's about time for this school board to start paying attention to them.
All right. That concludes our list of speakers. I've asked Commissioner Powell to summarize what you all can expect in terms of next steps, in terms of the budget process. Commissioner Powell?
Thank you. The deadline for board's submission of questions has passed for our round three deliberation, but that session is Thursday, May 1st. It's the last time we're on the calendar meeting to discuss the budget. We'll be covering the last portion of the book, which includes all of central office functions and the capital improvement plan. The next step after that is, depending on the outcome of our May 1st meeting, a week later, on May 8th, we are scheduled to vote on the budget. Everything is, of course, dependent on how close the board is to agreement on what the budget needs to look like when it comes right down to the wire. That having been said, I will be sitting with our CFO tomorrow and would like very much to have the board's input tonight or tomorrow at noon at the very latest as to what restorations your vote would be contingent upon. Okay? So what is it going to take for you to say yes to the budget? That's what I need to know before noon tomorrow.
Commissioner Adams has indicated, and I don't see any board members indicating any dissent to it, that if someone did not have an opportunity to sign up before twelve, but urgently wants to say something, we're going to allow for limited speakers. At a certain point, I'm going to tell you, I'm going to cut it off. We have another very important meeting to attend to right after this. But for those folks who, for example, didn't have an opportunity to call in, weren't able to call in, I'm going to give a limited opportunity. And I mean limited, so don't get all upset when I say, "That's enough, we have other business to attend to." Is anybody, I saw someone raise their hand, ma'am, you want to step up? This woman right here, just raise your hand. Okay, now, listen, listen. Announce your name, because we don't have your name on the list, but I want to be very clear to folks, and although things may have operated in the past a different way, this is where we'd get ourselves in trouble. There's a very important meeting that follows this that involves East High School. We are not, we are not going to spend the rest of the night listening to people. My point is this, there's protocol for signing up. In the future, if you hear about a meeting, and a lot of people heard about this meeting, sign up. But because this is an important subject, we want to give you some time to speak, so please do so respectfully, speak succinctly, make your comment, and then sit down. Please. Ma'am?
Yes, thank you. My name's Heather Fiori. I'm a parent of a first grader at Dr. Walter Cooper Academy, school number ten. We love our school, and our son is very happy there. He wants to stay there till he's in sixth grade. My husband and I chose Cooper Academy for a number of reasons, one being the expeditionary learning model. The proposed budget makes cuts to our school that could prevent us from continuing our EL credential in the future. Without a contract with the National EL organization, we can no longer claim to be an EL school. Through the contract, EL provides school leaders and teachers with professional development, curriculum-planning resources, and new school structures to boost school student engagement, character, and achievement. Teachers get lots of assistance with instructional strategy, expedition development, and aligning with Common Core state standards. The result is higher-achieving students with critical thinking, problem-solving, and collaboration skills who show leadership through civic engagement and social environmental service. I think it speaks for itself. The 2012-2013 budget, we were allotted seventy thousand dollars to provide trainings and support to our students and staff for expeditionary learning. The current year, we were allotted thirty-five thousand dollars for our contract, and though we were cut in half, we had a fifty percent staff turnover rate to provide support to all these new teachers, teachers new to EL. The next-year budget projects a contract budget of only seventeen thousand dollars, which is a quarter of the budget we should have. And in reality, we were short-changed last year, so we really need eighty thousand in order to continue our implementation of the expeditionary learning model. It's important to note, though, that the contract fee does go down in future years if we can show reliably implementing the model, which I think we can. The parent rep to the finance committee received the following response from the district last week. "The district is exploring a number of funding sources regarding the EL contract," and I'm glad to hear that, "but I'd like to know if there's a plan in place if those sources don't come through." And I'd also like to mention that we're one of four schools. As you know, there's two thousand students and two hundred full-time staff at these four schools. We're a significant population of students, parents, staff members, and students who are invested in our communities and want to continue the successful work of our schools. This model does work, and we should have more schools doing EL, not fewer. We've got family and staff knocking down the door trying to get in. It would be a huge loss to the community if these great schools were not able to continue. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioner. I'm not even going to discuss Robin Hooper, Deborah Solomon, Lyson Nelson, expeditionary learning funding. What I want to address is, I want the board to break the rule. The board has a rule, they've been going along with these budgets, man. It's time to not go with the flow. Let's go against the grain. Send this back. I've seen, only seen the board go against the rule one time, or bend the rule. That was a few years ago, when they had a rule that the superintendent couldn't be the regular superintendent. They broke the rule, changed the rule, and put him in here. And I'm not telling you to get rid of him, I'm telling you to be willing to break this rule of just going with the flow on these budgets, man. Y'all don't even know the people I mentioned, maybe Robin Hooper, but the rest of them people, they are just as important. At the end of the year, the profile in Rochester was the poverty rate and the low graduation for people of color. That still should be the focus, and we all agree that education is the key to that. So we need to break this rule of going with this and tell them to go back to the drawing board, man, because it's a crisis here. I don't have the details on what to do. Y'all getting paid that money, man. Figure it out. Figure it out, man. Let's go with, let's go against the grain. Don't go with the flow.
I'm coming tonight to talk in honor of Ms. Solomon. She is our school ten vice principal. We are all standing together, holding these signs. Her job is on the line, and she is not just a vice principal, she is not just a position. She is the glue to our school. You cannot take her out of school and put another vice principal in, because she is what works. We need her. I have a binder here full of letters from every single child in our school as to why we want Ms. Solomon in our school. These are all scholars in our school, minus the baby, she'll be there in two years. But we need Ms. Solomon to help raise these kids in the way they should go. They say it takes a village to raise a child. She is definitely our chief.
My name is Jomani Glasgow-Pitt. I think Mrs. Solomon should never leave Dr. Walter Cooper Academy, because she is the best. I love Mrs. Solomon very much. She helps me, and she gets all the distracting kids out of the classroom, so the rest of us can learn without being distracted. I want to say that if the Board of Education people take Mrs. Solomon away, a lot of children will be hurt and sad. This is why I think Mrs. Solomon should never leave Dr. Walter Cooper Academy. It is your day to make the right decision.
Good evening.
Nice job, young lady. Nice job.
Very good job. Hello, my name is Rose McLeod. I am a parent of two students that attend Dr. Walter Cooper Academy. I also have a child that attends number seventeen school here in Rochester as well. First off, I want to say that our children are not numbers. They cannot be put in a category that goes by statistics to figure out what it is to do to help our kids to succeed. That has to stop. My daughter, two years ago, burned her leg, a second-degree burn, because of a radiator at seventeen school, which was housed in Jefferson at that time. I came down here to the district, and in those two years, I've heard nothing from anybody regarding my complaints about the safety of my child at that school. So I moved her to Dr. Walter Cooper Academy. Not only was safety their first priority, my baby's education. My daughter's reading has skyrocketed, her math has skyrocketed because of Dr. Walter Cooper Academy and the expeditionary learning. Every city school from pre-K to high school should follow that school model. My daughter stood there and had me with tears in my eyes as she recited and narrated an entire expeditionary program that the students put on for the parents. And our parents were able to come out and to take a look at this program, listen to what the kids had learned. The children presented their project to us, and when they presented that to me, I cried because I couldn't believe some of the things that my daughter was saying, the words that she used, and I was just shocked. As a parent who sits there and takes time with my child and helps her to do these things, but these were words I hadn't heard from her before, and I says, "Where did that come from?" She said, "Because Ms. Cameron, our principal, Ms. Clyburn, and Ms. Solomon always say, 'Never give up, never give up, never give up.'" I feel like the district is beginning to give up on our kids when they want to take away people like Ms. Solomon that do the work they do. I have a five-year-old child that is a kindergarten student. The first thing that they told me when I took my son into kindergarten, and he had just started, he hadn't even had a chance to actually begin to grow in kindergarten, was his behavior might need some medical attention. Ms. Solomon takes my baby every single time that they have an issue and sits with him and talks to him. My kids came home tonight, I'm here because they were crying. I didn't know about this meeting. My babies came in the house crying. What's wrong? Ms. Solomon's going to go. She's going to lose her job. Why? What happened? Because they said that they don't have the money. We worried about money or education? Are we worried about money or education? Have any of you cut your salary to make sure we keep these teachers, these educators, and these people who are standing here to give our children an opportunity to learn? And I'm not just talking about my kids, I'm talking about all of them. Because some of these children out here, one male, one female, is going to have to marry my son or my daughter and create my grandkids. So I think about the future of what is happening now that is going to affect my kids and their children later. Y'all talk about East High School, I want to talk about that, too. How do you have an opportunity to have one of the biggest high schools in the city possibly be shut down? How could you do that with all of these students that we have in the district? You talk about kids going to college and graduating with New York State educations, but they leave this state. It begins in the very beginning, from pre-K on up. Ms. Levine came up here and spoke. She was my son's pre-K teacher. My five-year-old son can read at a second-grade-almost-level if he really sits there and does the work, and he's five. I couldn't read before then. This is some things that we have to start remembering and learning. The parents and the teachers are doing their part. It's not a question of whether or not they're doing their job. The question is, are you, as the board, doing yours? It is time to call you out and ask you, "What are you doing? Are you in that classroom?" When Ms. Solomon has to look at those kids and tell those children what is going on at home, and cry with them, and hold them, so that they can then take that state board and make sure they pass those tests. I will digress.
Thank you.
But you all need to fix yourselves, not the system here. You guys.
Again, I would just remind all speakers to keep your comments under three minutes. You'll hear the bell, and I'd ask that you respect that bell, because it's not about disrespecting the board, it's about disrespecting the people that are behind you that would like to speak. So please keep your comments to three minutes. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Vicki Gavia, and most of you know me. I'm a retired principal from the City School District. I had the pleasure of starting in this district in 1975 as a substitute teacher and retiring in 2010 as a principal after sixteen years, both at schools twelve and forty-five. I'm here tonight for two points that are in the budget. The first is related to a subcommittee that I happen to be a part of, which was the School Safety and Security Committee. We made a recommendation to advance ATS. I cannot tell you how important it is to advance ATS. When I was at forty-five, I went to forty-five school, and the year prior to my arrival, we had over three hundred short-term suspensions and a hundred long-term suspensions. And then we heard about the program in Clearwater, Florida. We went, we looked at it, we came back. Although it was a high school model, I was convinced it could be an elementary model. And so we started that model at forty-five school. We went from three hundred short-term suspensions to less than five. We went from a hundred long-term suspensions to maybe one. And if we suspended somebody long-term, it was because my hands were tied and I was required to, by the code of conduct. We are missing the boat. Not only did I not see ATS in the budget, but I saw an elimination of ISS in certain schools. Now, I don't know if you think that in K-six schools, everybody comes and we all play nice-nice together. That's not the way it is. So if you're taking out ISS and you're not replacing it with anything, especially ATS, you're asking for bigger trouble, not only in our schools, but out in the streets, in our communities, because that's where we see the ripple effect. So my first point is about ATS. I would love to have individual conversations with any of you about the success of the program. When it's done to fidelity, it is extremely successful. My second point is on the clerical. As a principal for sixteen years, I'm going to tell you that my success or failure depended on the clerical. Because often, while I was doing an observation in a classroom... I got back to the office to say to me, this parent's really upset about something. I do hear the bell, but I really, this is a terribly important point.
Please wrap it up.
Now, I've been retired for four years. I still work as a per diem principal. I can't tell you the countless hours in different schools that I go into where that clerical person is doing exactly what they said. The shoulder to cry on for some kids. Where do they go when they need hand lotion? It's in the office to talk to the secretary. Where do they go when they need a new uniform? It's the school secretary. So please, whatever you do, do not minimize your claim for customer service because they're
Hi, my name is Shayna Riley. I'm a parent at number ten school. I didn't know about the meeting, but I went to the school earlier and I was informed of it. What I'm basically here to say is that we tell our kids that, you know, you have to stay focused, you have to be determined for something. And here at number ten school, our school hasn't been open that long, but we've had a number of people come in and out of our school. Our children need to be stable and they need to know that when an adult is there to help them, it's like a village. Everyone needs to remain in place because some children don't do well to change. It's almost like a culture shock. I've been here since the school opened and I have two children, which were up here earlier, two boys, but they love going to that school. They look for things like band, music, all these different activities that our school is just now getting and for them to be taken away, it's not fair to them. Our schools should be given a chance to see how the progress is made. Five years is not long enough to make good progress and to say, okay, well, we're going to eliminate our vice principal. Ms. Solomon, she's really, she's really good with these students. When you go in her office, when they're in trouble, she doesn't just sit them at a table. She has them working, she's talking to them. Even our ISS, if you take that away from them, what about students who are trying to learn in the class and who's disrupted by other children that sometimes need to be taken out, need to be sat down and talking to the vice president? We have teachers that are very dedicated to the students and to the parents. One particular teacher, our fourth-grade teacher, I mean, he even offers to pick the kids up, to bring them to school. He tries to do whatever he can to help our kids. So if we're doing budget cuts and we're taking away from our children, it's just a culture shock to them. Not just putting them in a new environment, but culturally as a people because they need to know this person is here. It's almost like they're second moms and second dads to our children. So when we can't be there, they need to be able to go to a particular teacher that they feel comfortable with and tell them what is wrong. I've been at that school again since it first opened. We have children in that school. When I walk in that school as a parent, some teachers can't even get these kids to talk, but when they see me coming, the first thing they say, oh, there's Curtis' mom, there's Michael's mom. If they're in the hallway, they're acting out, they're running, they're screaming, but when they see me, they stop because they show that respect. A face that they've known since the age of three and four years old. They're nine and ten years old. The point that I'm making is, let's not do budget cuts. Let's see if we can, hold on, if we can find other ways around this. You know, even if you have to say, well, well, instead of budget cuts, have anybody ever thought to say, well, I know these families and parents and teachers may be shocked by what I'm about to say, well, can we take a small pay decrease? If the teachers can't do it, what about you guys? Say, well, here's something that this school is really offering, or give our school a challenge, say, well, can you try to raise X amount of dollars and they will match it? Something to show that you are trying to work with us. So thank you, come on.
Good afternoon.
Afternoon.
Felix Jacobs. And I'm here again to see you again, Mr. White, because, not by choice, but I'm here because GC, who's our parent representative on the finance committee, says that the response from the administration this year is the worst he's ever seen. And I think that you can see by looking around this room that there's an undercurrent here, is that people here, they are using silence as a strategy and the parents are not gonna be denied because I think you could feel the tension here. And this is the reason why, but I'm particularly here to represent the expeditionary learning schools, number eight, number ten, number fifty-eight, and Integrated Arts and Technology. We have not been able to get any answers from the district in terms as to whether or not our credential is gonna be renewed. We can't get any answers in terms of the staffing or the commitment to this program. The district says it wants middle-class families to stay in the city and trust me, we can get out. But if you are going to be gutting the schools that offer the programs that our kids like, then we'll have to take our service elsewhere. That's gonna be our response to you. But in terms of this overall disrespect of this silence from this administration to the answering of our questions, this needs to stop. And we need to know some answers today. Thank you.
Good afternoon, good evening. My name is Ronald Hall, President White, Board. I just have a couple of comments about the budget. One, I would ask that you guys revisit the budget process altogether and look at equitable funding for all the schools. Two, look at reorganizing central office before you make the cuts to the clerical staff and the teaching staffs of the school. It's very important that we recognize that we have over thirty-one thousand students and a great majority of those students are being failed by us, the community, as well as the central office, as well as the superintendent and the entire Rochester City School District. How do we get it back on track? We have to give the teachers the resources needed to do their jobs. Quite simply, they can't. They're overworked, they're being under these different state mandates of which nobody's advocating in the central office for the teachers. Until we get that back in line and do the cuts where they need to be placed at, look at central office, look at the superintendent's executive group, we're gonna continuously spin the wheel like we're hamsters running in the wheel, coming across the same problems over and over again. One more comment about East High School. East High School has one of the best traditions in the Rochester City School District. It's been around for years, a storied history. I personally don't too much care for East because I went to Marshall. Commissioner Elliott, Vice President Elliott's not here, so, but for us to have that school on the list and threatening to close down and we have to reorganize it, to me is unacceptable, unprecedented, and there needs to be some serious changes at the top of the food chain.
Good evening, Board. By the way, this young lady right here, you want to speak? She's our last speaker for tonight. Thank you.
Good evening, Board. My name is Daniel Delahanty and I am a teacher of fourteen years in the district and I'm the father of three children who attend city schools. And actually, I'd like first to thank you all. As our elected representatives, you serve as both the vanguard and our last line of defense when it comes to changes in the district. You're our scouts. You're there to tell us what's coming, what changes are coming down the pipe. And at the same time, we need you, especially at this time of year, to be scouring the budget and to be looking at what's fair, what's just, and what's equitable. I'd like to speak first on behalf of those who are probably the unsung heroes in every school and that is the clerical staffs. I've learned in my time as a teacher that schools have institutional memories. And if we lose that institutional memory, we actually find that the school fails to perform. Institutional memory is held by teachers, by principals, but we have a lot of turnover in that area. Where we don't have as much turnover oftentimes is the clerical staff, particularly those who are running our front offices. We need to make sure that the people who are serving the school's institutional memory are preserved. And when we're looking at that budget and we're looking at some salaries in central office that are peaking at a hundred and seventy thousand dollars a year and we're cutting those people who are the front lines working with our children, who see the children every day, that's something we've got to reexamine and you are our last line of defense in that. So please, keep an eye out for it. I'd encourage you also, please, to continue to support the teachers. I teach at East High School. There is a redesign coming along and the people best qualified for that redesign, I think, to make that happen would be teachers working with their parents, students, district officials, and other community members. And that's the last point that I'd ask that you consider. Process is important. Please continue to do as you have done, which is in bringing all members of the community, parents, students, their voices count, they've got to participate in any change that comes to a school. Please continue to call for that when the district says they're making a change. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Gail Elhelo. I am a clerk for with Rochester City School District and I will hit my thirtieth year July sixteenth of 2014. I want to say to you, it's not about me, but I want to say to you that clerical staff should not be cut. You have no idea the things that we do on a daily basis. I talked to a parent today for twenty minutes because she was upset. I calmed her down. I took a message for the vice principal and the principal. I did attendance for substitute teachers. Our clerical staff is imperative for customer service. If you make these cuts, there will be no customer service for the schools in this district. I am a product of the Rochester City Schools. My children are products of the Rochester City Schools. I have not witnessed anything up until recently that makes me more sad than to see the way the budget cuts are headed this year. Thank you.
Thank you very much, everybody. Can I get a motion to adjourn this public hearing? Just a second. All those in favor say aye, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much for turning out. Here, we mean up here. Those folks that were participating in the meeting regarding East High School, please stick around. There is no public comment portion in that meeting though. There is no public comment portion in that meeting. You're welcome to stay though.[1431.41]
[inaudible] Thank you very much, everybody. Can I get a motion to adjourn this public hearing? A second. All those in favor say aye, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much for turning out. Here, we mean up here. Those folks that were participating in the meeting regarding East High School, please stick around. There is no public comment portion in that meeting, though. There is no public comment portion in that meeting. You're welcome to stay, though. [inaudible] Thank you very much, everybody. Can I get a motion to adjourn this public hearing? A second. All those in favor say aye, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much for turning out. Here, we mean up here. Those folks that were participating in the meeting regarding East High School, please stick around. There is no public comment portion in that meeting, though. There is no public comment portion in that meeting. You're welcome to stay, though. [inaudible] Thank you very much, everybody. Can I get a motion to adjourn this public hearing? A second. All those in favor say aye, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much for turning out. Here, we mean up here. Those folks that were participating in the meeting regarding East High School, please stick around. There is no public comment portion in that meeting, though. There is no public comment portion in that meeting. You're welcome to stay, though. [inaudible] Thank you very much, everybody. Can I get a motion to adjourn this public hearing? A second. All those in favor say aye, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much for turning out. Here, we mean up here. Those folks that were participating in the meeting regarding East High School, please stick around. There is no public comment portion in that meeting, though. There is no public comment portion in that meeting. You're welcome to stay, though. [inaudible] Thank you very much, everybody. Can I get a motion to adjourn this public hearing? A second. All those in favor say aye, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much for turning out. Here, we mean up here. Those folks that were participating in the meeting regarding East High School, please stick around. There is no public comment portion in that meeting, though. There is no public comment portion in that meeting. You're welcome to stay, though. [inaudible] Thank you very much, everybody. Can I get a motion to adjourn this public hearing? A second. All those in favor say aye, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much for turning out. Here, we mean up here. Those folks that were participating in the meeting regarding East High School, please stick around. There is no public comment portion in that meeting, though. There is no public comment portion in that meeting. You're welcome to stay, though. [inaudible] Thank you very much, everybody. Can I get a motion to adjourn this public hearing? A second. All those in favor say aye, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much for turning out. Here, we mean up here. Those folks that were participating in the meeting regarding East High School, please stick around. There is no public comment portion in that meeting, though. There is no public comment portion in that meeting. You're welcome to stay, though. [inaudible] Thank you very much, everybody. Can I get a motion to adjourn this public hearing? A second. All those in favor say aye, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much for turning out. Here, we mean up here. Those folks that were participating in the meeting regarding East High School, please stick around. There is no public comment portion in that meeting, though. There is no public comment portion in that meeting. You're welcome to stay, though. [inaudible] Thank you very much, everybody. Can I get a motion to adjourn this public hearing? A second. All those in favor say aye, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much for turning out. Here, we mean up here. Those folks that were participating in the meeting regarding East High School, please stick around. There is no public comment portion in that meeting, though. There is no public comment portion in that meeting. You're welcome to stay, though. [inaudible] Thank you very much, everybody. Can I get a motion to adjourn this public hearing? A second. All those in favor say aye, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much for turning out. Here, we mean up here. Those folks that were participating in the meeting regarding East High School, please stick around. There is no public comment portion in that meeting, though. There is no public comment portion in that meeting. You're welcome to stay, though. [inaudible] Thank you very much, everybody. Can I get a motion to adjourn this public hearing? A second. All those in favor say aye, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much for turning out. Here, we mean up here. Those folks that were participating in the meeting regarding East High School, please stick around. There is no public comment portion in that meeting, though. There is no public comment portion in that meeting. You're welcome to stay, though. [inaudible] Thank you very much, everybody. Can I get a motion to adjourn this public hearing? A second. All those in favor say aye, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much for turning out. Here, we mean up here. Those folks that were participating in the meeting regarding East High School, please stick around. There is no public comment portion in that meeting, though. There is no public comment portion in that meeting. You're welcome to stay, though. [inaudible] Thank you very much, everybody. Can I get a motion to adjourn this public hearing? A second. All those in favor say aye, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much for turning out. Here, we mean up here. Those folks that were participating in the meeting regarding East High School, please stick around. There is no public comment portion in that meeting, though. There is no public comment portion in that meeting. You're welcome to stay, though. [inaudible] Thank you very much, everybody. Can I get a motion to adjourn this public hearing? A second. All those in favor say aye, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much for turning out. Here, we mean up here. Those folks that were participating in the meeting regarding East High School, please stick around. There is no public comment portion in that meeting, though. There is no public comment portion in that meeting. You're welcome to stay, though. [inaudible] Thank you very much, everybody. Can I get a motion to adjourn this public hearing? A second. All those in favor say aye, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much for turning out. Here, we mean up here. Those folks that were participating in the meeting regarding East High School, please stick around. There is no public comment portion in that meeting, though. There is no public comment portion in that meeting. You're welcome to stay, though. [inaudible] Thank you very much, everybody. Can I get a motion to adjourn this public hearing? A second. All those in favor say aye, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much for turning out. Here, we mean up here. Those folks that were participating in the meeting regarding East High School, please stick around. There is no public comment portion in that meeting, though. There is no public comment portion in that meeting. You're welcome to stay, though. [inaudible] Thank you very much, everybody. Can I get a motion to adjourn this public hearing? A second. All those in favor say aye, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much for turning out. Here, we mean up here. Those folks that were participating in the meeting regarding East High School, please stick around. There is no public comment portion in that meeting, though. There is no public comment portion in that meeting. You're welcome to stay, though. [inaudible] Thank you very much, everybody. Can I get a motion to adjourn this public hearing? A second. All those in favor say aye, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much for turning out. Here, we mean up here. Those folks that were participating in the meeting regarding East High School, please stick around. There is no public comment portion in that meeting, though. There is no public comment portion in that meeting. You're welcome to stay, though. [inaudible] Thank you very much, everybody. Can I get a motion to adjourn this public hearing? A second. All those in favor say aye, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much for turning out. Here, we mean up here. Those folks that were participating in the meeting regarding East High School, please stick around. There is no public comment portion in that meeting, though. There is no public comment portion in that meeting. You're welcome to stay, though. [inaudible] Thank you very much, everybody. Can I get a motion to adjourn this public hearing? A second. All those in favor say aye, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much for turning out. Here, we mean up here. Those folks that were participating in the meeting regarding East High School, please stick around. There is no public comment portion in that meeting, though. There is no public comment portion in that meeting. You're welcome to stay, though. [inaudible] Thank you very much, everybody. Can I get a motion to adjourn this public hearing? A second. All those in favor say aye, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much for turning out. Here, we mean up here. Those folks that were participating in the meeting regarding East High School, please stick around. There is no public comment portion in that meeting, though. There is no public comment portion in that meeting. You're welcome to stay, though. [inaudible] Thank you very much, everybody. Can I get a motion to adjourn this public hearing? A second. All those in favor say aye, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much for turning out. Here, we mean up here. Those folks that were participating in the meeting regarding East High School, please stick around. There is no public comment portion in that meeting, though. There is no public comment portion in that meeting. You're welcome to stay, though. [inaudible] Thank you very much, everybody. Can I get a motion to adjourn this public hearing? A second. All those in favor say aye, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much for turning out. Here, we mean up here. Those folks that were participating in the meeting regarding East High School, please stick around. There is no public comment portion in that meeting, though. There is no public comment portion in that meeting. You're welcome to stay, though. [inaudible] Thank you very much, everybody. Can I get a motion to adjourn this public hearing? A second. All those in favor say aye, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much for turning out. Here, we mean up here. Those folks that were participating in the meeting regarding East High School, please stick around. There is no public comment portion in that meeting, though. There is no public comment portion in that meeting. You're welcome to stay, though. [inaudible] Thank you very much, everybody. Can I get a motion to adjourn this public hearing? A second. All those in favor say aye, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much for turning out. Here, we mean up here. Those folks that were participating in the meeting regarding East High School, please stick around. There is no public comment portion in that meeting, though. There is no public comment portion in that meeting. You're welcome to stay, though. [inaudible] Thank you very much, everybody. Can I get a motion to adjourn this public hearing? A second. All those in favor say aye, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much for turning out. Here, we mean up here. Those folks that were participating in the meeting regarding East High School, please stick around. There is no public comment portion in that meeting, though. There is no public comment portion in that meeting. You're welcome to stay, though. [inaudible] Thank you very much, everybody. Can I get a motion to adjourn this public hearing? A second. All those in favor say aye, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much for turning out. Here, we mean up here. Those folks that were participating in the meeting regarding East High School, please stick around. There is no public comment portion in that meeting, though. There is no public comment portion in that meeting. You're welcome to stay, though. [inaudible] Thank you very much, everybody. Can I get a motion to adjourn this public hearing? A second. All those in favor say aye, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much for turning out. Here, we mean up here. Those folks that were participating in the meeting regarding East High School, please stick around. There is no public comment portion in that meeting, though. There is no public comment portion in that meeting. You're welcome to stay, though. [inaudible] Thank you very much, everybody. Can I get a motion to adjourn this public hearing? A second. All those in favor say aye, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much for turning out. Here, we mean up here. Those folks that were participating in the meeting regarding East High School, please stick around. There is no public comment portion in that meeting, though. There is no public comment portion in that meeting. You're welcome to stay, though. [inaudible] Thank you very much, everybody. Can I get a motion to adjourn this public hearing? A second. All those in favor say aye, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much for turning out. Here, we mean up here. Those folks that were participating in the meeting regarding East High School, please stick around. There is no public comment portion in that meeting, though. There is no public comment portion in that meeting. You're welcome to stay, though. [inaudible] Thank you very much, everybody. Can I get a motion to adjourn this public hearing? A second. All those in favor say aye, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much for turning out. Here, we mean up here. Those folks that were participating in the meeting regarding East High School, please stick around. There is no public comment portion in that meeting, though. There is no public comment portion in that meeting. You're welcome to stay, though. [inaudible] Thank you very much, everybody. Can I get a motion to adjourn this public hearing? A second. All those in favor say aye, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much for turning out. Here, we mean up here. Those folks that were participating in the meeting regarding East High School, please stick around. There is no public comment portion in that meeting, though. There is no public comment portion in that meeting. You're welcome to stay, though. [inaudible] Thank you very much, everybody. Can I get a motion to adjourn this public hearing? A second. All those in favor say aye, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much for turning out. Here, we mean up here. Those folks that were participating in the meeting regarding East High School, please stick around. There is no public comment portion in that meeting, though. There is no public comment portion in that meeting. You're welcome to stay, though. [inaudible] Thank you very much, everybody. Can I get a motion to adjourn this public hearing? A second. All those in favor say aye, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much for turning out. Here, we mean up here. Those folks that were participating in the meeting regarding East High School, please stick around. There is no public comment portion in that meeting, though. There is no public comment portion in that meeting.[638.37]
...president of representative on the committee. I'm a former special education teacher, became a school administrator, first at Waltham Bagman High School where I was for ten years, and am now over at East High School. And ASAR felt that it would be helpful to have somebody with secondary experience from two successful schools to be here to help provide.
Next, Ed Lopez.
Great, Ed Lopez, I'm the general counsel, and I can vouch for Kim's experience. Both my kids went to Wilson when Kim was there for ten years. Kim was an inspiration to our kids, and so it's a pleasure to have her here. I'm the general counsel, I'm going to be looking at the legalities of the situation and let you see.
My name is John Burdick, I am the senior buyer with the purchasing department here with the district. I'm here on behalf of Gary Smith, the director of procurement, as well as the entire purchasing staff. Our role in this is as facilitators for all RFPs, RFI's conducted throughout the district through the last several years.
Good evening, my name is Beverly Bremore, deputy superintendent for teaching and learning. I am a former alum of the Rochester City School District, and a graduate of West High School, and a student with attended number nineteen school. I have experience as a human in human resources, assistant principal of high school, middle school principal, diversity training, as well as classroom teacher of math and social studies, study skills and other activities that I've had during my career. Thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Will Smith Wilson. I sit on the board, I'm the second board union paraprofessional under March Grufield. And I also was a student at East High School, I'm a staff at East High School. I graduated from East High School, like I said before, I met my husband at East High School. And this touched my heart as far as, you know, with the school closing. And I'm here to do whatever I can to help keep this school open.
Good evening, I'm Jose Cruz, I'm a member of the Rochester School Board. My connection to East is my oldest daughter was a graduate. She went on to, from there, to become a senior petty, chief petty officer of the Navy for the last fifteen years and is still there. So, she's done well. This is my fifth year on the school board, and I look forward to further discussion of this.
Good afternoon, my name is Larry White, I'm the lead safety officer at East High School, been there eighteen years, so on behalf of Bente and East High School and Rochester City School, I'm here for security and safety reasons.
My name's Mary Adams, I'm a member of the school board, beginning my third year on the board. I have children at school number ten.
Hi, my name is Van White, I'm in my seventh year, I'm no relation to Larry White, but we do have an interest in wanting to see East High School thrive and survive.
I'm in the school board member, I'm in my sixth year, I am the representative for East as well, and my son will be attending school.
We got, we're a graduate, East used to be us all, that's one connection.
Hi, I'm Mala Powell, I serve, it's my fourth elected term on the school board, since elected ninety-seven, so we're looking at fourteen, I'm sorry, seventeen years. And my connection to East is I had a foreign exchange daughter that was, that I encouraged to go to East. My home daughter was there for just three years, and she moved here to a different school, but it was not for lack of caring, a concern on the part of East's staff, just that she needed more than what East's daughter wanted. So, my very first experience with East High though, was as a section five track competitor in nineteen seventy-nine. And back then, there was broken glass on the all-weather track, and there were physical chains and locks on doors. And I thought, this is a scary place. So, I saw for the first time as a parent and as a school board member, I'm like, this is a nice facility, they cleaned it up nice.
I'm Karen Buck, I'm a special education teacher at East, and also faculty rep and school-based plan two.
My name is Anna Sotia, I'm an eleventh grader at East High School. I come to represent the National Society and the serving government there. I am here to voice any questions or concerns regarding this, and just hope I can do my best.
All right, as I said, this is our first meeting, I'm not sure if it'll be our last, but it certainly is our first. As part of that, I wanted to make sure that what I call our stakeholders had an opportunity to talk about what a new and improved East High School would look like. So for those, our student rep, Anna, our teacher rep, Bente rep, and administrative rep, I'd like for you to share with the committee what you think a new and improved East High would look like. Be brief as possible as you can. Want to start with you?
Well, in terms of the teachers, we have been meeting weekly to come up with what ideas we'd like to see, and any plan that takes place. We have talked about extended learning in terms of giving the kids more time. We have talked about more services, support services for our students in terms of social emotional health, making sure that those stay in place and can be expanded for following years if we are in need of that. We have great student support center that we'd like to see grow and expand, not being taken out. We've also talked about the curriculum in terms of more guidance from central office about curriculum, more department meetings in the school for curriculum, getting everyone on the same page, that's been a challenge this year, would be comfortable about. So we'd like to focus a lot on curriculum and how we can roll it out next year, and making sure that we're all breathing system and really challenging students.
Anna?
Well, our students at East High School would like to see a balance between students and teachers, where those who do not necessarily learn the same way others do have access to them, access to being one of one of the teachers, and they would comprehend what others did more than they could. We would like students to see that they as well can learn, no matter how fast or how slow they are able to react to things.
I don't think I can speak to the stakeholders of East, obviously, because I would defer to East.
I also like to see, I'd like to see more social workers in that capacity, working with the students that's not learning, cannot pass the sixty-five, cannot make a sixty-five for Regents. So I think we should have some type of vocational training for these students, whether it's in East High School or at another location. But I think definitely, we know everyone is not going to college, so having said that, I think we definitely need some vocational for the students that's not learning.
I think we should reach out to the community, and communication is the key to all of this. If we stand together as unity as one, reaching out and talking, finding out what the problem, finding out the weak area. If we find out what the weak area is, we can work in that area in order to make it strong. If we stand together as one instead of being divided, and I know that with East High School, we do stand together as one, and working with the staff, the supporting staff is so important, with the paraprofessionals and the TAs, it's so important in the school to support the teachers, to support the children inside the classroom also. Getting together with them, meeting with them on a daily base or a monthly base in order to come together and find out what is the cause of the children not coming to school. One of the things that was so important with the superintendent's conference day that we had, when we went out as a staff member into the community, to go out to their homes, taking the report cards out to them, to the good, even those that don't come to school, trying to bring them back to the school. When one parent, really touched my heart, when that parent saw us as a group coming out there into the community, in their community, seeing us there coming to their home, it was about fifteen of us in one home, and she was so touched that we came to see about her child. And if we can continue to do that, to reach out to the parents, guarantee you, we'll get those children to come in and get the support to bring up their grades, so we can have a higher graduation rate at East High.
Now, we thought it was important that stakeholders share, because those kinds of experiences and those desires should dictate whatever is rolled out for East High School, including an EPO. We're happened to be here just talking about the EPO, and so our clerk was kind enough to prepare a series of materials. If you look underneath your agenda, you'll see there's a summary of the features of the EPO model, and you can just read that at your leisure. It describes for you what is required of an effective EPO. And then, because I'm a lawyer and that's my background, of course, I couldn't resist the temptation to provide you a copy of the law, that's Education 211A. But actually, as far as lawyers go and laws go, it's pretty straightforward in language. In sum and substance, it basically says, "An educational partnership organization is an organization that serves as superintendent for a particular school." So what essentially happens here, and I know you all know this because you've had the materials already, but what essentially happens here is, the EPO, if we selected an EPO, that EPO would serve as the superintendent for East High School and East High School alone. Dr. Vargas would continue to be our superintendent for the balance of our schools. But on this particular, if this, the board approved this, and if the state approved this, then the EPO would be the superintendent of East High School, right? All right, and it gets a little more detailed than that, but in sum and substance, that's what it is, and again, I leave it to your leisure to look at that particular statute. You should look at it, it's clearly something that is understandable and reasonably straightforward. Any questions so far? Yes?
You've already disclosed your position as a lawyer, and as we do, it's sort of quasi-official history, and can you tell us when this became law?
No, I cannot. Can you? Or can Ed?
No, I can't.
Malik says phone a friend. No, I do not know when it became law, the fact is, and that would be interesting to know, but I don't want you to think that us not knowing is a reflection of any important ignorance. The fact is, it is the law, it is what is required in terms of what you have to do procedurally, and it is one of the five options that we were given. I do not know the history of it. I do know that Buffalo has elected to have an EPO, and of course, we have that. Ed, can you add some?
It became law about five years ago, before then it was something called a partnership support organization, and it did not play as big a role as an educational partnership organization, because the PSO, or they were known, were basically support agencies for the schools, whereas now, the educational partnership organization runs the school and reports to the Board of Education. So, you know, that's how it works. In Buffalo, there are two educational partnership organization schools, Lafayette and East High there, and they've been there for about a year and a half. Well, two others that are not part of that program, which, I mean, they're called EPOs, but they're really not when you look at them. They're more PSOs from the prior.
That allows us to move on to the overview of the EPO process, the RFP process. And again, let me remind folks, traditionally, when the district does an RFP for a vendor, and they do it all the time, they look for vendors all the time, it's a process that most people don't see. This, as Ed and I have discussed, is a pretty unique situation, it's never happened with this district. So the feeling from the board was, that since this was a procedure that process could result in having a substantial impact in our community, and because, of course, we're spending substantial dollars, public dollars, that this is a process that appropriately should be seen in the light of day. So you want to describe the process that is probably unfamiliar to most folks? Sure. Thanks.
Yes, as you had indicated earlier, approximately March fourteenth, we were told by the state what our options were. Superintendent Vargas then directed Gary Smith, the director of purchasing, to work with Ed Lopez in developing an RFP for this EPO or educational partnership organization Proposal was prepared in cooperation with Gary and Edwin, and it was publicly advertised on March the twenty-seventh, publicly advertised both in Minority Reporter and Daily Record, which are our two publications that the district uses for all public solicitations. We also posted on the district website, as well as a contract website called BidNet, which we post all of our documentations on, both internally in the district, as well as for our facilities maintenance organization. At that point in time, we then personally contacted seventeen higher learning institutions here in the Rochester area, as well as many community-based organizations, letting them know where this solicitation was and where they could find it. The due date for the responses for the EPO was on April the sixteenth, and as you had stated, we received one formal proposal for this EPO.
All right, with that, as I said, Wade, we are going to look at a brief video on School Turnaround. This is the one company that did apply for the intimate response to the RFP, School Turnaround. All right, where are our A P specialists? Hold on one second. Is there anybody who can help us with the volume?
Behind every failing grade is a child who isn't learning. And when a child isn't learning, it's the school that's ultimately failing. School Turnaround is breaking the cycle of underachievement for schools across the country.
You know, as a principal, I had seen so many programs come, so many ways of approaching staff development, parent involvement, curriculum, and it just seemed like everybody kept looking for another.
...failing. School Turnaround is breaking the cycle of underachievement for... Behind every failing grade is a child who isn't learning. And when a child isn't learning, it's the school that's ultimately failing. School Turnaround is breaking the cycle of underachievement for schools across the country.
You know, as a principal, I had seen so many programs come, so many ways of approaching staff development, parent involvement, curriculum, and it just seemed like everybody kept looking for another program, another idea, another initiative, another piece of research to throw at the problem. There is no change in the world that's ever happened because of a mandate, or an idea, or a program. It always comes down to being led by a person. That's where change is driven by. The idea for School Turnaround was, can you help create people who will turn around failing schools and failing districts?
School Turnaround is transforming failing schools, starting with the people who run them. It's a unique approach that gives schools the strategies and means to build their own success.
The key element of our work is the relationship between what we call our turnaround specialists, and those are the folks that we hire on staff and the principals with whom we work. We look for folks who are the leaders of failing schools. Now, a failing school can be a school that has nine percent of kids reading at grade level, but it could also be, as an example, a school that we worked with in Seattle, Washington, where there were ninety percent of kids reading at grade level, and when I called the principal up and said, you know, why do you want to participate in School Turnaround, she said, because I'm not concerned about the ninety percent that are passing, I'm concerned about the ten percent that we continue to fail. So our clients are folks who really have this sense of urgency about change, and this real commitment to the fact that every child should be reading and doing math at grade level. That's what it should be. That's the commitment that we have to kids through public education.
Success is measured against achievement targets that a school or district sets at the beginning of a school year. The remarkable results demonstrate that schools always meet their targets with School Turnaround support, with consistent improvements across all grade levels in math, reading, and writing. By focusing on what happens in the classrooms, School Turnaround is empowering educators of failing districts.
What makes us different is that we are not a generic drop-in, one-size-fits-all program. In fact, we're not a program at all, we're a series of strategies and a series of leadership characteristics. With School Turnaround, we get to actually changing people's behavior. This really is about personal transformation for leaders. Our message, everyone achieves, no exceptions, no excuses, is not only the message that we go out and announce who we are, but it's also our way of intervening with folks, so it serves a dual purpose. It's also what we think that folks should do in their own schools. Everybody ought to have a message that they live by. So when we use that message, it's a way of intervening, so when people start to make an excuse or an exception about a kid, you can say, no, sorry, we agreed that everyone achieves. You've got to figure out, how are we going to make this work, instead of talking about why it won't? We offer a money-back warranty, and the money-back warranty says, if your school does not raise academic achievement in one year's time, two years for high schools, then we will refund the full cost of the program.
Since its beginning in two thousand and one, School Turnaround has helped over two hundred schools and over sixty thousand students. With this success-driven outlook, School Turnaround has achieved a one-hundred percent success rate, and schools need this kind of help now more than ever.
I think, given the political climate, the economic climate, and the educational climate of where we stand, both within this country and in the world, that the notion of bringing in turnaround experts will continue to grow at a rapid rate in this country. There's this misunderstanding in education that change should take a long time, but the fact is, kids should only be in first grade, seventh grade, tenth grade, once. They can't afford to wait ten years for change to happen. Kids who are reading at grade level, kids who are able to do math at grade level, science at grade level, kids who have the test scores to back that up, are kids who have a shot at a healthy, productive, and happy future.
That was just Turnaround's description of their work product. Now I've asked Mr. Lopez to sort of give us a little, a background on, give us a summary of the executive summary that they submitted. The actual proposal is about a hundred and thirty-three pages long. Each member of the committee was provided a copy electronically, but I thought it was appropriate if Mr. Lopez described in summary what specific elements were of a turnaround proposal.
Sounds great. And in fact, the executive summary is only about a page and a half, and since it is in bullet form, and since there's so many people here, I thought it'd be best for me to read the key portions of it for you, okay? Because that way, everybody knows exactly what it says. It begins by saying that, "School Turnaround is the signature program of the Renzler-Vier-Ville Institute," which is a not-for-profit organization located in the Albany area. They've been around for about fifty years, and have built local capacity to achieve outcomes for human gain. And their commitment, as I said before, is to, is to, never to a plan or a process, but rather to results and people to whom those results matter. And here's what they say they will do for East Junior and what they call East Senior High. First, a hundred percent of students graduate with a Regents diploma. Second, a hundred percent of students are accepted either into a two- or a four-year college or a trade school. Three, students have the skills needed for success in college and career, which include being great readers, writers, speakers, and thinkers. Four, students are given the opportunity to connect learning to real-world experiences, because that will help them tackle life in the real world. Five, students are proud to have the opportunity to attend East Junior and East Senior High School. And six, students are able to deal with conflict effectively without resorting to violence, and feel that East is a safe, physical, emotional, and intellectual environment for learning. Then they go on to explain that they consider East to have, be in a situation where they have a critical need of a two-pronged approach. The first one is to intervene quickly and incisively in the immediate crises of what they call low performance, a disempowered student body, an isolated community, and the staff that is underprepared to tackle the challenges. The second one is to set the aim for a school community that is committed to providing a rigorous and supportive learning environment that engages all stakeholders in opening up opportunities for its young people. They then go on to explain that unlike a traditional school takeover approach, their School Turnaround approach takes the term educational partner organization very seriously. In submitting this proposal, they've already engaged partners. They've got two. First, Empire State College, and secondly, the New York State Liberty Partnership Programs. They will also seek additional local community partners as well. This is important to do, not only because it is a way to garner resources, but because in the end, they believe strongly that change must be owned locally. As such, they see themselves as the partner and catalyst, and would want to work closely with the school board, the district, and the existing school community to bring about the change that is so clearly and urgently needed at East. Their vision is to rebuild East into the school that it can and should be in a way that honors its deep and rich history. How will they do this? First, they're going to use a proven leadership framework to hire a new leader, with the skills and strategies specifically shown to be successful in School Turnaround situations. Furthermore, to provide this leader and his or her leadership team with the training, strategies, tools, and mentorship to immediately tackle the challenges of making East a successful educational organization. Secondly, they will immediately revitalize the staff through a hiring and important rehiring process that identifies those teachers with the energy and commitment for clear, proven results. Third, they would establish their higher educational partner, Empire State College, with a credit-bearing New York State and Common Core standards, I'm sorry, with a credit-bearing professional development set of coursework that addresses the immediate needs around New York State and the Common Core standards, creating an effective teaching and learning environment, and a social-emotional program for kids that need it most. They would introduce an assessment system that includes benchmark assessments for diagnoses and milestone intervals, as well as very short-cycle formative assessments aligned to the Common Core, in math, in literacy. They would create new systems based in the already existing, but not yet fully implemented, PBIS approach that exists at East High, that will address the behavior and safety issues in a way that makes the school environment positive while reducing the climate that quashes student and parent voices. They will implement a schedule that provides for double periods of literacy, math, and science on a daily basis, as a part of a transition program that's going to serve the joint needs of closing large achievement gaps, as well as credit recovery for those students who need to get back on track for graduating. Then they will establish a literacy-infused curriculum that commits every class to their model, which is read, write, think, discuss. They will introduce a strong pre-AP and AP curriculum, as well as early college credit coursework for those students who are able to undertake it with support, and they would use the Empire State College for that. And they would commence a service learning component that engages students in leadership, self-driven learning, and community service using their Community Spark Plugs model. This will also... This will also be a core approach to engaging families and the broader community. This component will engage another strategic partner, Emory &amp; Henry College, the nation's foremost higher education institution for service learning.
Thank you. All right, so that leaves us with the purpose of the meeting today. First of all, I got to clarify, everybody got a copy of the proposal by email, right? Raise your hand if you didn't get one. Everybody got, you didn't get one? All right, Ed, you'll make sure that Ms. Wilson gets one? All right, so she's got one now. All right. Everybody else got a copy of it? Larry needs one. Can you send him one by, I think you have his email address, right? Okay. Okay. All right. We'll double-check. If you don't have it, let us know. All right? Because that's critical. Because your next question is, what is your function here as a committee? Your overall function is to advise the board on whether this particular option is a viable option, this particular proposal's a viable option or not for an EPO. I want to be clear about this. You all are not making the decision. The Board of Education, by law, is the only organization that can make that decision here, right? But we understand and we respect and appreciate the insights and experiences that you have that can help us make that decision. So your role is to advise the Board of Education, and the Board ultimately is responsible for responding to that March 14 letter and saying which particular option we're going to go with. All right? What is your job today? Now, I said in emails to you all, I hope you got them, that your job today was to brainstorm on questions. I mean, we saw a nice video you all probably did not have a chance to go through with a fine-tooth comb, that 133-page proposal, but my goal today was to keep it short and simple. We introduce ourselves, talk about why you're here, look at the law that brings us together today, look at the proposal, and then today, try to brainstorm on questions we might ask Turnaround Solutions, right? What questions do you have? Now, you all have had the proposal at least for the last 24, 48 hours, and I know you all live very busy lives, but did anybody have an opportunity to write down questions? Why don't we just start here and move our way around? Now, let me tell you what's going to happen. We're not going to debate. We're not even going to try to answer those questions tonight. We just want you to, Ms. Lee is capturing your questions. We're going to capture those questions, and whatever questions you have today, and questions that you might think of between now and, let's say, the next 48 hours, we're going to, I'm going to give you Ms. Lee's email address, and she's going to capture those questions, and we're going to forward all those questions to Turnaround Schools, because nobody's in a position to answer those questions today. But I bet you, given your experiences, there's some good questions here. So let's start with you.
I have a bunch. For starters, when it comes to the students next year, how will they, based on the enrollment numbers that they give, how are they going to accommodate the students in other buildings? If they don't take all the students back, how will they accommodate all those students? Because we have 1,801 students. If they don't take them all back, where are those other kids going to go? What is the process for students being accepted into the school? Are there any criteria that they're going to look at? Will they take based on grades? What criteria are they going to use? One of the most important ones that has not been addressed, we tried to bring it up in our meetings with Central Office, how will their plan work with the building construction? We are supposed to, in a year, go over to Marshall for construction for the entire year. They need to have somewhere in the plan a contingency for that, especially with our CTE programs. How are they going to house culinary and optics in another building? And that's critical because it's in one year. I didn't see anything about addressing attendance in terms of how do they plan to improve our attendance, because that is one of the things that the state really wanted us to work on, and I didn't see a good plan in place for that. I'd like to see what the student's schedule is going to look like at every grade level with the block periods. We've done blocks before, and they have and haven't been successful, so I'd like to see what their projected schedule looks like. One of the other things I didn't see, which I was surprised about, is the fact that the CTE programs are not addressed, which the state had that as a requirement, that we are supposed to grow out our CTE classes and partner with BOSI's. BOSI's will only take 80 kids, and then from there, we're supposed to grow out the CTE programs. I didn't see anything in there, and I think that's a critical, I'd like to see what plan they have in place to grow out our programs, because we do have great ones.
These are some great questions. I would just ask people in the future, I don't know how quick Shanay is typing, I hear her working fast.
I can, I can email them to her, yeah.
Please.
I was trying to write them, I thought. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm going to give you all her email address.
Yeah, I can email them.
Shanaylee@rcsdk12.org. I'll repeat that a couple other times, but if you take the mic.
Spell Shanay.
Yes, Shanay is S-H-A-N-A-I dot Lee, L-E-E, r-c-s-d-k-12.org.
Okay.
We'll repeat that as many times as necessary. But if you take the mic, Anna, are you, are you set?
Yeah, I'll email her the rest of them.
That might be a very good idea, to email additional questions, and we want people to do that, but again, let me speak and give us a chance to report.
No problem. Okay. So I as well have a couple, but I'll just go for important ones. One of the first ones. Yes. For the diagnostic and benchmark assessments, I have a question regarding those. Will those be for all classes, even those not having Regent's exams at the end of the year? Is it really necessary to have, you know, tests for music classes, for example, if there's no actual test at the end of the year for them? Another one. Will these teacher credits count towards teachers for kids, you know, for the teachers who do their job correctly? But, you know, of course, there'll always be rebellious kids, unfortunately. Will those, you know, will they be affected for kids who don't want to do their work and therefore that, you know, ends up messing up their, their records at the end of the year? In response to the parents, how will we get the parents to collaborate with us along with this? Because I've heard, you know, I was reading over the proposal, that there should be, you know, parent involvement, and I understand that I'm completely behind that 100%, but how will we get those parents to actually come in and work with us? And I'll go with one, two final ones. What about those students who do not wish to go to college? You know, what will we do with those children who they feel, you know, because college isn't for anybody, so what will we do with those students? And for the ELL, English Language Learners, for, I only saw in the proposal for those Spanish speakers, but us at East High, we have various English Language Learners, like we have a big Nepalese percentage there. We have others, you know, I was concerned about what we do about those students as well.
Let me just say, I have the board, and everybody here, we really appreciate what we hear, this insight we're giving, and it's truly incredible. I saw you speak at one of the speak-ups. Have you ever thought about becoming a lawyer?
You said that the first time.
I don't know. I don't know. Don't do it. Don't hide it. Thank you very much. Again, if you have any questions to think about afterwards, Shanaylee, shanaylee@rcsdk12.org. And by the way, we passed the mic around. I know Ed is contemplating how he's going to respond, but everybody is a part of this committee. If you have any questions, I think it's fair game, and we should be submitting them to Turnaround.
Okay. Well, some of the questions I had, Anna very eloquently asked, as well as Karen, so, and I think you should be a teacher, so, there's my plug. I do have quite a few questions, but I'll try to just focus on the ones that I think are most important. Empire State College, not sure why that was the particular school that was chosen to lead professional development for teachers. In my many years of education, and I've had a lot, I haven't had a lot of experience, in fact, none, with teachers who have come out of that program, administrators who have come out of the program, nor have I had students who have gone to that program. So I don't have any bias. I just, of all the universities and colleges that I've worked with, with student teachers and sending kids off to become teachers, Empire State College was not one that came to mind. So I'm wondering how stuck we are on that. So I'm just going to throw that out. I was really concerned, page 22, has enrollment projections, and just like Karen mentioned, what about the kids that are currently in the school that would not be there next year? I also had concerns because there seems to be a high level of attrition if you look at the cohorts, and obviously, not everybody has it, but I'd urge you to look at page 22, and I'd like School Turnaround to address how, for example, if you start with 100 students in ninth grade, the 2014-15 school year, it drops to 98, then 95, then 92. So those are kids that are being lost. The number that was a little bit more scary to me was eighth graders for next year, 225. By the next year, they put 200 as ninth graders, 190 as 10th graders, 180 as 11th graders, and senior year, 175. So they've lost 50 kids. Where are those 50 kids? I don't know what those numbers account for and how they came up with that. So I think it's really important to find out. They talk about 100% graduation, but they're looking for, in three years, an 80% graduation rate. So I just want to make sure that we have an understanding. Where do those kids go? Are those kids that we're assuming, if they're not cutting it, are going to go somewhere else, or are they dropping out? God forbid. That's what we need to know. Parent piece is huge. I'm not seeing a lot of parent stuff in here. There is a lot of really good stuff in here. I do have to say, I know we're asking questions, and by the nature of that protocol, we're bringing up concerns, but there are a lot of great things in here that look really good to me. I don't know how to do this with the money that is provided. I don't know enough about budget and finance to know how you take the same amount of money and turn around a school with these changes, but I do have to say that that was something that appears positive on paper. One last question would be what's going to happen to the TLI program, the Teaching and Learning Institute, which is a very successful program there, and I didn't see any mention of that as well, so, wanted to say.
You know, you sent an email, you know the email, Anna, so that's a great question. Did you just, did you save that question about the numbers?
No, Karen was the one who sent that email.
Could you just repeat that again?
Well, Karen's email asked the question.
It was Karen.
Yes, it was Karen, asked the question. We have 1,800 kids there now, not we, you have 1,800 kids there, and the projected number for next year would be to start seven through 12 with 1,000. So what happens to those kids?
And I'm just going to ask one question, because I think the issue of rightsizing, and that's what School Turnaround calls decreasing the number of students, rightsizing the schools so that it's equivalent to what the number of students that there are in other schools and to what they view will be the right number to make a school successful. I'd like to know more about how they would rightsize it. So that's, you know, and I think that's the same question that Karen asked, but I just wanted to restate it in a different way, because I want to restate it in a, well, how will you do it, and how would that mean success?
I have a couple of questions. One, certainly, I'd like to have a concise timeline.
If they were chosen, how would, how would they come into the school, as they often say, boots on the ground? What does that look like? So that we can educate our families and our students about this opportunity that they have guaranteed to us that they would work. The second one that I am terribly concerned about is the lack of mention of career pathways and how we help our students discover their interests and their talents and those opportunities after high school that will make them be committed. So, and to go along with your question, I think we're talking about student engagement. They're talking about 1,000 students, and you see that the number is going down. So what happens to the other 800 students? Is there an application process? And that becomes certainly an obligation that we have as a district. We do not want to create anything that's about the haves and have-nots. And, and lastly, what do we do about students who learn alternatively in other ways? Thank you.
My question is also, the autism program that we have at East High School is a very vital program that we have, and one of the things is, if anybody know anything about autism, it's hard for those children to accept changes. And how would we prepare not only the students for a change for next year, how do we prepare those parents for those change for those autistic kids? And where do they fit in this? If it's in here, I just got this, and I haven't had a chance to read all the way through it, but I haven't seen anything about, if it's in there, about the autistic program that they have at East High School, which was very successful there. Now, what's going to happen with those children for next year? And the other question is, is all of this supposed to take place in September? When are we going to start the process of bringing in, you know, you looking at to take changes away, taking away the principals, the assistant principals? You're looking at those changes. When is all this process going to start? Because we're in May, September is right around the corner. So when is all this, you know, hiring is going to take place, especially for those that have to reapply for their jobs? When is all this going to take place?
I just have a few brief questions. Some have already been asked, but I, to him, concerned about the parent engagement piece. It's pretty light on that stuff. Specifically concerned about what happens to our ELA, especially at students there, especially our bilingual students. Now, I know that they address some approaches in their proposal with regard to the work they've done in the Midwest with newcomer students that are coming in, which ironically is something we just talked about at our budget hearings, the newcomer kind of approach to Latino students coming in. So it's going to be interesting to see how they, they deal with that. I think one big issue, and I don't see it in the information, is their experience, and I'm sure they'll get an opportunity to talk to us about, but their urban experience with regard to other schools that they've dealt with that are somewhat like ours. I mean, it's, there's, we know that there are different approaches, and sometimes things might work well in the Midwest that aren't necessarily going to work here. So I'm real curious to see what that experience is. My last point, I think it's a critical one, because I have not seen anything, and that is, what happens to our bargaining units in the process? Where do they fall in this whole kind of scenario? Because they talk about, they talk about hiring, rehiring, allowing teachers to move on, but as we know, that, given our current circumstances, is not as an easy thing to do, given our contractual responsibilities and relationships with our bargaining units. Now, I don't know if the law deals with that, sort of, you know, supersedes that kind of relationship. I mean, that's, that's, I'm just curious to get more information about that. One more last thing. I'm curious to see what the report-back schedule is to us, so that we don't go a whole year within coming back and saying, oh, gee, it didn't work. So I'd like this, there should be some major expectations in terms of reporting back. And, and I got to tell you, these goals are ambitious, lofty comes to mind, but I, it's going to be interesting to see how that, how that plays itself out. And again, it's important that we keep tabs on that kind of achievement, so.
Thank you. I got a couple of questions. I haven't had an opportunity to sit down and read the proposal, but one of the questions in mind is safety. I haven't heard a lot about safety. I know when we had all the kids at East High, we had 1,800 kids, and we only had about eight safety officers. So I'm very concerned about that piece. And the next question I have is about, I mentioned about BENTE, job security. I haven't heard anything about, you know, where's the union stands in this, where's folks losing their jobs and maintaining their jobs? So I'm very interested about that also.
Given that this EPO model is framed as a relatively short-term project, a three-year, basically, com- a three-year, basically coming in and eliminating the principal and hiring a new principal temporarily, if not permanently, eliminating all the other teaching staff, and I'm not sure about the other units, that's, that's a question mark. So given that this is a three-year process where the intention is to come in and quote-unquote "turn around" or transform the school and then leave, and leave it, you know, hopefully in, in better shape according to their proposal, how can we, in terms of our, well, I guess, so I, so I want to make sure I frame this question to the, to the EPO and not to, to each other. But the question is, how can you expect us to accept major backtracking on our district's efficiency parameters and efficiency standards in terms of capacity of the building? I mean, we are, you know, undertaking major facilities, modernization with assumptions of capacity of seventeen-hundred or greater students. And, you know, for many, many years, East has been a very large secondary high school. That's what we, you know, understand it to be in the district. So how can we be expected to have you come in for three years and then leave with major, major undermining, again, of our long-term efficiency and financial assumptions and standards? You know, what is, what is the trade-off there? And then one other question I have is, why was that extremely lengthy opinion piece regarding School Turnaround approaches and, you know, leadership in charter school, leadership organizations? Why was that included in the document instead of just being a simple citation? And then one last question is, where were your sources for understanding East High School as it exists now? Because similar to, you know, the question about Empire State, I mean, there was no indication of any knowledge about, you know, St. John Fisher, Nazareth College, University of Rochester, and the deep, you know, longstanding, successful relationships with East High School. So where, where was your source of information about what we have going on at East now?
Thanks, Mary. Just a couple of brief questions because I think many people ask the questions I would ask about EL's parent engagement. I know Jose asked about those two issues, special education. The proposal seems to lack some level of detail. Perhaps that's to be expected, but I'd like a little more detail on how they plan to, for example, engage parents. What's the specific plan for doing that? I was also very curious about how they reach their long-term goal, you know, a hundred percent graduation rate. You, you can't just say that to anybody who knows something about education.
It says eighty percent somewhere around, on the page fifteen.
Within three years?
Yeah, within eighty percent here, but then in the.
They said a hundred percent. So, so that's a, maybe that's a question for you, Melissa. What's, why a hundred and what, eighty? And how do you even get to eighty? I mean, I'm not saying that's not possible, but you got to describe for us how you're going to get from, I think it's forty-four, is it forty? What's the current four-year cohort at East? Is it forty, forty, forty-five, forty-six, something like that, mid-forties? How do you go from there to eighty percent in three years? That's a, that's a good question. It's a tough question, but if you're going to say it, I, I would like to know how they reached that determination that they could get at a hundred or eighty percent, and then how they will do that. This is sort of implicit in Mary's question. You know, the statute two-eleven-A says five years, up to five years, you can have an EPO. They map out three years. My question is, what happens after the three years? You know, okay, maybe you've gotten to eighty percent, but how are you going to maintain that? Is, is the school going to look different just because you hired a new principal? Why, how will you maintain that eighty percent is a, is a question I think that is fair. And then I also, and I think somebody asked this question. There's some good programming going on at East, and maybe they didn't have the time to examine that, but there's an optics program, there's a Teaching and Learning Institute, there's the culinary program, there's that program that Anthony Plazinski has with the U of R, right? College Readiness, is that what it's called? Yeah? How are you going to? College prep. How are you going to grow those programs? Or do you acknowledge that there's some good things going on in there? And if so, what commitment do you have to grow those programs? And again, to be fair to them, maybe they didn't have the time to make that assessment, but they will now because we're asking them the questions, I would think.
So I had a lot of the same questions, so I won't repeat. A couple new ones. One is when looking at their staffing model and looking at the bilingual, I see that they are looking at losing four bilingual positions. So if they're revamping the bilingual program, it doesn't seem like it's adequately staffed. And then they also say that they're going to recruit great talent for this, and we already have a talent shortage in the bilingual areas. So how would they address that if we already have a shallow pool locally? As well as they say that this is supposed to be a locally adopted program or we can't do it without the local. I don't see anywhere in terms of after the three years, sustainability of that. So I would be curious as to how are you going to make that so that this is a sustainable process, not just a great three-year partnership and then, oh wait, we're going back? So those would be my couple of new questions that I haven't heard.
I think most of the questions have been asked. And what I happen to heard about is, I really want to know about their approach to discipline. I mean, we got, it's not just East High School, but we, serious discipline problems in the city school district. That's where most of this stuff comes from. Corporal punishment is banned, so we got to find out what, what needs to be done there. And then also their approach to community-based organizations. We have a lot of rich-based community organizations here that are hungry and interested in being involved. How do they go about selecting those organizations? And the timeframe for engaging those organizations? And if they can expand upon a little bit more about what they've done with community, community-based organizations, not the, the larger colleges and universities, but some of the community-based organizations that work in various neighborhoods.
Thank you. I sent two, two questions, but you know what? Shanae, I didn't have your name in the distribution, so I'll have to resend you. They both had to do essentially with curriculum-type questions. In their executive summary, they describe undertaking its own professional development, curriculum and learning materials, supplies and other expenses. They will not use, be using those provided by the district. So my question is, since the core knowledge slash Engage NY has essentially been thrust upon us in, at every grade level, how is it that New York State Department of Education is going to accept a proposal that doesn't include core knowledge or Engage NY curriculum, much less anything the district may have developed? I'm really curious as to how that would go through and what curriculum exactly are we talking about? Because the Board of Education ultimately has the final say on matters of curriculum. And so, and textbooks. So I think it's incumbent upon School Turnaround to explain to us what that curriculum's going to be. My other, my second question had to do with this, the concept of double periods of literacy, math, and science. Well, science is only one Regents requirement to get you through high school. History, on the other hand, is, requires two Regents exams, which cover three years of study. If there was any subject I'd want to see doubled up, it would be history because global requires two years of study to sit for the Regents. And, and there have been some studies that show that these, when the kids get global in double blocks and are able to do it in a single year, the probability of being successful in the Regents exam is higher because there's last summer learning loss or they're not trying to recall something from two years ago. So those are the questions I already submitted. I had two others that came to me since we sat down. One is, from their own presentation, they've affected sixty-thousand students in two-hundred different schools. That's only three-hundred students per school. Those are very small school communities. This is a very large school community, even if you talk about reducing it from eighteen-hundred down to a thousand. So I'm not sure if, from a matter of scale, how, how truly prepared they are to take on such a big school. I'd like to see, rather than taking an average of three-hundred students per school, I'd rather they show us what the different sizes of schools are, to show us that they've done very small schools and very large schools. And my last question has to do with the term spark plug. And I'm guessing this is a proprietary term. They use it in two different ways, community spark plug and spark plug leaders or characteristics of the spark plug leader. And my, everybody knows how a spark plug works, right? They just, that's all. One, you know, a split second is the only time, it has to work. The rest of the time is just not doing anything. It reminded me of the One Minute Manager, and, you know, it seemed rather faddish. So, and I fortunately have an electronic version, so I searched for every occurrence of that term, and they do not explain what spark plug means, either in its community spark plug form or in its spark plug leaders form. So I need to understand, is this just one more trademark thing that sells books and sells turnaround plans? Or is there a real substance to this? And I, I'm not prepared, I'm not satisfied with seeing TM or registered following the term. So those, those are my comments. Thanks.
All right, that. Yep, sure.
Came to mind, sorry. Going, you know, listening to everybody's questions, I actually have two more. One regarding the restaffing of the principal. In the proposal, it was mentioned many times that, you know, teachers and, you know, the new staff and whatnot will be trained. So if they're being retrained, why must we get rid of what we already have? You know what I mean? Mr. Solar, he is doing a very good job despite that we are separating into two. So, I mean, he is a very quick-adapting person, so I'm just concerned, you know, if, if they're going to just, you know, retrain or train the new people that they hire, why must they just get rid of the good ones that we have already? That was one. Two, for the rehiring of the teachers. I know I was reading some of the proposal in there. It says that they'll be able to rehire teachers who are, hold on, let me look at my notes, engaged teachers. So I would just like to know, how will they be able to know those are engaged teachers versus the ones that we already have now? So those were my two concerns, you know?
Excellent question. Anybody else have more quick emails? What's that? All right. So here's the thing, no pun intended, but we have a quick turnaround. And here's how it's going to work. And I have to apologize, you all know how we got ourselves into this situation. We don't have the opportunity to deliberate as long as we would like to. So here's how it's going to work. You have twenty-four hours from this moment to submit additional questions. Again, the emails, Shanae's email address is shanae, S-H-A-N-A-I dot, yeah, it's on the board. Okay, all right, there you go. All right. So you have twenty-four hours to submit additional questions. I cannot emphasize enough the importance of you going through this document a second time, a third time. A lot is at stake here, yes?
First, Shanae, can you send us the questions that you already have or that we can make sure that we don't?
Excellent point. Can you do that, Shanae? All right, that's an excellent suggestion. So twenty-four hours to go through that packet and, and as best you can. And again, I can't emphasize enough, this is a very important process. This vendor went through the trouble of submitting a proposal. We ought to do it justice by going through it page by page if you have to. And no question is a dumb question. Don't, don't worry about whether someone's going to think that's a dumb question. There's not, anybody's going to judge you because this process is that important. So twenty-four hours to do that. We will then submit the questions to Turnaround, and we will tell them. They have a very quick turnaround. I'm thinking, I haven't talked to, polled the members of board, but I'm thinking twenty-four, forty-eight hours is what they have to do. They have, they're going to have to do what we do. They're going to have to work extra hard to produce answers to those questions. And then, I'm, again, I haven't had a chance to speak to my colleagues about this. This is an unprecedented process. But I think what would be prudent at that particular point is distribute the questions, the answers back to you all. And then if the board deems it's appropriate, and I would imagine it would, to allow you all to, we'll have a second meeting. I'm, I'm hoping within the next week, because there's a lot else going on here, and I've talked to my colleagues about it, there's a lot else going on here. There's a lot of balls in the air, and we're, we're trying to manage those. So I apologize for pressing you for your time, but we probably will have to meet one more time. We'll review the answers, and the board will decide before that meeting whether they want Turnaround to come in here and make a presentation. Mr. Lopez has indicated they're willing to do that. They couldn't do it today because the turnaround was too quick, but they are willing to make a presentation. Again, let me emphasize, what's that?
They weren't quick enough.
They weren't quick enough, perhaps. But, but let me emphasize, this is an important process. We would not have asked you to come to the table but for the fact that we needed eyes on the ground, people that really appreciate that. Please spend that, that experience, that knowledge, the next twenty-four hours, develop some additional questions. They can be tough, they can be easy, they can be straightforward. Just please do that within twenty-four hours. Get them to Shanae, and then we will get you back the answers and also let you know of the follow-up meeting time. Is that fair? Questions? Jose, I'll start with you.
We already have, I don't know, there's got to be, I don't know how many questions you have right now.
Forty-nine.
It's got forty-nine questions. It would seem to me that, why don't you send those as the first phase of questions so they can begin working on those right now? And then allow us, allow them to get some feedback and give them as much time as they can to get that feedback back to us, since there are already some really great, critical questions. Send those now. Let them send us the feedback, and then we can work on, you know, the next phase of questions for them.
I approve that, it's an excellent suggestion.
They normally are, yes.
I think we should, I think we should go with that. So Shanae, you've got, everybody think that makes sense? Yeah, forty-nine is, I didn't know it was that many questions, that's a lot of questions. Maybe you should ask one more to make it a good even picture. Right, right. Okay, so Shanae's going to do that, everybody, that makes sense to everybody? Any other questions or suggestions? Want to pass this mic around?
So I just wanted to ask everybody on the.
Go to the website, NICE ed website, and look at the School Turnaround Phase-In, Phase-Out EPO requirements when the state comes to you. Really, we have no choice. We have to select a new principal. That's not something that they're going to allow us not to do. We have to, we can't bring back more than fifty percent of the teachers that are already there. That's a requirement. We have no say about that. So I think everybody here needs to go to the website and look at that because assumptions are being made that are not correct, and I want to make sure that everybody understands that.
Ed, do you want to repeat that Mary was doing what I asked her to do, which is what Shanae told me to do? And everybody put their email address on that sheet of paper. So she makes sure they're, Ed, do you want to summarize or repeat?
Sure, just, just quickly. We have no choice. The School Turnaround models, as the state has told us what we've got to do, basically with Phase-In, Phase-out, or with a turnaround EPO, we have to replace the principal. That's what the law requires under, you know, the requirements. We have to rehire no more than fifty percent of the school staff. We've got to adopt a new governance structure. We've got to provide job-embedded professional development. We've got to offer staff financial and career advancement incentives. We've got to implement a research-based, aligned instructional program, extend learning and teacher planning time, and create a community orientation and operating flexibility. That, those are requirements right from the website.
But before anybody responds to that, we have to say, folks, your job here is just to, EPO, your job for the next twenty-four hours is to come up with critical questions that relate to the package, that's it. Right? I mean, your job is not to figure out what our other options are, what the law is. You have your job and task before you. Anybody?
No, actually, just have a point of reference. We're talking about the next steps, and I know this has turned into something that is uniquely not the way an IRP process would be run within the district. In all fairness, obviously, the vendor had a very short timeframe to turn around their proposal. I want to make it clear that what we saw on the TV is not their presentation to us. It is a blurb on their website that anybody can go to just to see briefly. is a blurb on their website that anybody can go to just to see briefly what are they all about. We in the purchasing departments would recommend that what you do after you gather your questions, we would then solicit the references, ask a series of questions, which we would normally do anytime references are provided for an IRP, and as well, give the vendor a chance to present, because many of the answers you are looking for will be in their full presentation.
Okay, now, in terms of the references, can you begin to gather those now? Is there some reason why we can't get them?
Nope. And what I'm trying to do is just walk you through what would be the process, since this is in not in a normal surrounding, that it has now been opened up outside of a committee and has now become a public discussion. They would normally then be given an hour to present their proposal, so that many of these forty-nine, fifty, or fifty-plus questions that we've engaged in would then be answered. We would then, at the end of the presentation, give ourselves another hour to then read through all the questions that had not been answered, and any additional questions we would have had, and then give them opportunity to either answer them at that time or get back to us. And I think because of the short period of time, this going back and forth with questions and answers, the timeliness for a presentation, in fairness to whomever the, the committee is or isn't, or who's part of it, that's going to then recommend it to the board, would be given ample time to actually see a presentation, and allow them to do their due diligence and, and basically present their proposal.
Now, let me just respond. You mentioned that normally you would give references. My question was...
No, normally what I said was, we would then contact the references they did provide, ask a series of questions, so that we would then have those questions answered from their references, and have those questions available also for the IRP presentation.
My question is, can you not begin that process?
We, we will be getting that process.
Can you not, let me ask that question, all right? My question is, just let me ask a question. Can you begin that process now? Of, are giving the references, that's all?
Yes. Are you done? Okay, yes, yes. There are four references on this IRP, and yes, we've developed the questions for them. You, you have outlined the twenty-four-hour timeframe, and then we're gonna send the questions to the vendor. I was just giving you the outline of the IRP process and how would normally conclude because of the timeliness of these discussions.
I think everything that you suggested, but we're all dealing with this truncated timeframe, so, so I just wanna make sure that the direction's clear. You should begin collecting and doing what you normally do with those references. And I think it's reasonable when you suggest that we should, they should have an opportunity to be interviewed, but I, I would tell them that, like us all, turnaround's gonna be very quick. We've got it, we've gotta make a decision, we've gotta make it pretty quickly, and this isn't the only decision, the option that they have. So someone, you, Ed, contact them and explain to them the truncated time. But I think we can accomplish everything that you're talking about.
Just a quick question, piggybacking on that, I don't recall looking at what the references are, but if they are actual schools, it would be great if we could send one or two people out to actually talk to people in the schools. I know the timeframe is not good for it, but we are talking about kids and people and...
Do you think that's...
There's four schools, two are in Ohio, one's in Alabama, and one's in Hollywood.
I'll go to Hawaii. I'm going to Hawaii. I have the microphone, okay? The person with the microphone goes to Hawaii, just saying. You wanna come with me? Okay. You two people, so we're going.